Good evening, everyone. We'll call a meeting to order. Joy, would you please call the roll?
Flornoy.
Here.
Hallie.
Yes.
Revolinski.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Hamilton.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. As our first order of business will be to swear in our newest Fairfield Police Officer, that's Robert Barker. If you could join me. Let's see, we'll move right over here. This is me, and we'll be in office. Okay. So, please raise your right hand. I, Robert Barker.
I, Robert Barker.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties of police officer.
Discharge all the duties of police officer.
In the city of Fairfield.
In the city of Fairfield.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now or hereafter required by law.
Congratulations.
Hi, I'm Robert Barker, obviously, as you all heard. I'm from Van Buren. I was born and raised in Kusakua. Graduated from Van Buren High School. I attended college at Indian Hills for Criminal Justice, which I'm still attending. I'm 19 years old. And this is my family and my girlfriend's family over here. We're all from Van Buren County, Kusakua and Bonaparte area. And I'm really happy to be working at Fairfield Police Department.
Great. Great. Thank you very much, and congratulations.[124.11][124.11](applause) Hey, counsel, then, we'll, before we go to our consent agenda, are there any additions or changes this evening? If not, we'll move to our consent agenda items. Patients reading through these, quite a few. First, we'll have approval of the minutes from the September 11th council meeting. Approval of minutes from the September 12th special council meeting. Approval of minutes from the special council meeting on September 19th. Acceptance of the library board minutes. Acceptance of the beautification commission minutes. Approval of the September 22nd payroll of $142,430.73. Approval of a debt service payment to the USDA in the amount of $12,975. We have a resolution of employment for a desk supervisor with the parking rec department. We have approval of a liquor license for Amore Mio for outdoor service. We have approval of claims in the amount of $292,241.87, of which there is a payment of $179,075 to Carl A. Nelson for contracting on the wastewater treatment project. Are there any questions regarding those consent agenda items? Not entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Flornoy?
Second.
Second by Rasmussen. Please call the roll.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Hamilton.
Yes.
Revolinski.
Yes.
Hallie.
Yes, abstained from the minutes of the September 12th and September 19th special council meetings.
Thompson.
Yes. But again, I was absent from one of those special meetings also.
That everyone, Joy? Okay, thank you. The next counsel will move then to our resolutions and action items ordinances. First is a resolution considering the tax abatement application of Don and Rita Pope. And this was a residential renovation. The application states that it was about a $75,000 project. And that falls within the guidelines of our tax abatement for residential, so I'd entertain a motion to approve the application.
So moved.
Moved by Hallie.
Tarkin.
Second by Hamilton. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Okay, thank you. Next counsel, this is a exercise we've been through a year ago about a local development project that is applying for historic tax credits. And Melanie, if you could refresh us on the project, its nature, and what steps the council is being asked to take.
Yes, so this project is for redevelopment of the Loudon Manufacturing Building into residential apartments. And I know that there's several representatives of the development group here. If you have any, I'll say, more specific questions, this project has been in front of planning and zoning and the council before. So they, the developer's going to be applying for his state historic tax credits, workforce housing tax credits, and additional support from the Iowa Economic Development Authority. So the resolution and then the next action items are all showing the city's support of this project. It says in there that the city commits to a financial support of 100% of the incremental tax over a 10-year period. And this is our standard tax abatement for multi-unit housing, multi-family housing, excuse me.
Right, thank you, Mel. So if you recall, counsel, that was part of the creation of that extended tax abatement also, so that that could be pledged to the project based on it being funded. Last year competitively, they fell a little bit short. I assume the application looks a little better this year. Sam, can I ask you? Or, I'm sorry, David? Okay.
Yes, the points look much better this year. We think that we're right now in range to actually have the applicer get the award.
Okay.
Number of points.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, any questions? Not then, we will, I'll first entertain a motion to approve the application and the city's participation.
So moved.
Moved by Thompson.
Second.
Second by Rasmussen. Any discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign? Thank you. And then the second step will be the letter of support to the Iowa Finance Authority on behalf of the application from the city. Entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Moved by Thompson.
Second.
Second by Flornoy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign? Thank you. Good luck on the, on the project. Next, counsel, we have a date setting for an open house. Melanie, if you could tell us about that.
Okay. So the next three items on your agenda are all related to the Step Two sanitary sewer improvements. As we've said before, this is generally parallel to Crow Creek from Lambs and Woods up to MUM around the east side of the city. The good news is that the city, we are ready to start land acquisition. And I believe, as I've mentioned before, the archaeological report is back with no significant findings in this area. We've also heard preliminarily from the Army Corps of Engineers related to the plan to bore underneath the forested wetlands. This would be in the Frye property and some other, just a few other areas, but to bore those. So things are looking good from an environmental standpoint. We don't expect any significant changes to the route from the environmental standpoint. So we're proposing to move forward with the land acquisition. Now, it's been almost two years since we've had a public meeting or an open house on this project. It was back when you were starting land acquisition for the treatment plant, since any of these property owners have really seen a map unless they've stopped by French Rentner or City Hall to view that. So your first item, this is, I will say, it's not required as part of the land acquisition process, but we just feel it's a good practice to do, would be to have an open house before your November council, or the first Monday of November. I set the date from 5:30 to 7:30, but we could also discuss that.
Okay, thanks, Mel. And counsel, I think if you recall, these open houses are an opportunity for those that'd be affected to look at maps and to question the engineers. So I think it's obviously an important part of the project. So then entertain a motion to set November 6th from 5:30 to 7:30 PM here at City Hall, correct? For the open house.
So moved.
Moved by Flornoy?
Tarkin.
Second by Hamilton. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign? Thank you, motion approved.
The next item is a resolution. And this resolution comes from Alerson Cooney, who is helping us through the land acquisition process, getting the city in the correct position that if you would have to go through condemnation, you took the appropriate steps ahead of time. We hope that everything can be negotiated, but this does give proper notice to meet those regulations, but it also does allow the public a chance to discuss the project. So what we're looking at for this resolution is setting the date of a public hearing, more of a formal proceeding than the open house, for November 13th at 7:00 PM.
Okay.
So moved.
Moved by Flornoy to set November 13th as a date for the public hearing.
Tarkin.
Second by Hamilton. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign? Motion passes.
And your, the next resolution on this issue is hopefully a temporary, temporary resolution. In 2014, when you did the land acquisition at the plant, you created a policy, well, I should say for the plant and Step One, you created a policy that when the total easement purchase is estimated less than $10,000, that you would do a compensation estimate rather than a full appraisal. And the way, what your policy then designates is that the city administrator, along with the land agent, or with the aid of the land agent, determines which property fall under this $10,000 mark. What this resolution says that in, until a city administrator is appointed, since that position is currently vacant, is that I would serve as that fair market value agent.
Okay.
So moved.
Tarkin. Moved by Revolinski, second by Flornoy to appoint Melanie, city engineer, as our fair market agent. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign?
Thank you.
And then finally, we have an ordinance which is first reading, and this is to amend off-street parking requirements. Melanie, if you can tell us about the discussion of planning and zoning?
Yes, so this, this does come from planning and zoning, and you'll see that their minutes are attached to the agenda. This was brought to planning and zoning for, for the apartment building concept of the amount of spaces needed per unit. And right now, the code, we do know that the parking code needs some updating, and we're in the process of doing it with the codification. But given the developments that are going on in the city right now and the need for housing, we took this, we brought this to P&amp;Z now, rather than waiting for the codification. Across the board right now, your code says two off-street parking spaces per unit, and it applies across the board, single-family to multi-residential or apartment buildings. The ordinance that is in front of you is changing that, or changing that requirement for apartment buildings. The ordinance defines an apartment building as five or more apartment units under a single Then it also defines the parking for efficiencies, as well as one, one- and two-bedroom apartments and three-bedroom apartments. Your code currently does not define efficiency, so you'll see that that's added in there as a one- or two-room apartment unit where one room contains the bedroom, kitchen, and general living space. So you think of an efficiency as typically one room plus a bathroom, where that one room contains your major functions of the area. So that is Sections 1 through 3 of the ordinance, and it is related to parking spaces for an apartment building. Section 4 is related to parking stall width. This is an issue that P&amp;Z sees often. I, it's an assumption, but I would guess it's the most common variance that P and BOA sees. The current code says a parking space shall be 10 foot by 22 feet. The Iowa statewide urban design and specifications manual, SUDAS, which is used pretty common throughout the state, suggests nine feet width and 18 feet length. And so that's what's outlined there in Section 4A and B. And then, one thing your code does not discuss is the aisle width. So what a lot of times you'll see people do if they're fitting, they have a tight space, they will make their stalls long enough to meet city code, but then narrow up the aisle so that nobody can turn, or it, it doesn't really solve the issue that the code is intending. So this Section 4C references the SUDAS manual related to aisle, aisle width and stall.
And the aisle width, do, do we designate an aisle width presently in our ordinance?
No.
Okay.
No. And the aisle width, the reason why I referenced SUDAS rather than a specific width is because the width changes whether it's angled parking or perpendicular parking.
Okay.
So that explains ordinance.
Thank you, Melanie, appreciate it. Question, John?
So I see, after the ordinance defines efficiency, then it says efficiencies only need to have one space designated, which that makes perfect sense to me. And it says one and a half space for one and two-bedroom apartments, and then two spaces for three-bedroom. So how does that work, one and a half space? In other words, they'll have, they'll have, for every two apartments, they'll have three spaces available, and they'll give them out as they see fit, based on the occupancy or the needs of the tenants?
Correct. I'm not sure how other apartment buildings in town work, whether they issue permits for the lots, or they just have a general size and it's a first-come service. You will see attached to your agenda, there is also a summary of what other apartment buildings within the city have per unit, and that's really where we started with in developing this ordinance.
Melanie, do we have any idea of what kind of questions we've had from other apartments? In other words, complaints that they've had that's saying, hey, the spaces aren't big enough, they aren't long enough? I mean, do we have any kind of record of that, where we keep track of that?
Rebecca, our current planning and zoning administrator is shaking her head no, that we have not heard from any, any units, as far as they're not being enough, or the sizes or anything. I will say I have heard from maybe more some businesses related to the aisle and the parking People, I had a, the complaints are often from areas that already meet the code. It's, it's maybe that the layout of accessing a particular building is, is more difficult, and that's what their complaints are around, rather than the size of the parking lot. Maybe that there's not enough parking close to the door, and they blame that on the size.
All right, well, just to follow up to Tommy's comment, I think that is something that would be interesting to research, not just in our city, but if we're changing according to this new standard that's being used elsewhere in the state, if we, if, I don't know who's can research this for us, but Melanie, if you could, or something. But it would be interesting to see, yeah, where that's been applied and if there's complaints there. We haven't, you know, in our city maybe, but in other developments throughout the state, that would be useful for a second reading, maybe.
Well, I guess, I mean, it sounds like, I mean, we're trying to do something that is progressive.
Yeah.
When you hit with those. So it would seem like it would make some sense to, if we've had complaints, if there are certain things that we just aren't, that we aren't up to date with, then let's change it. But again, you know, if we have a unit, and I'm using an example, you know, a 12 complex apartment unit, and it has to have 87 parking spaces, I mean, that doesn't make a lot of sense.
But this is actually helping them in a sense, because you are reducing
We're reducing
The requirements for width.
Um.
But you're adding
Requirement.
The requirement.
Um, actually, we're reducing the amount of spaces required for multi-unit housing. So you're right in the sense that it is progressive in it and decreasing. A lot of places don't decrease the amount of parking needed. But when we looked, and again, also attached to your agenda is several towns, our size and what they require. I think that because it's been a while since the city code has been updated, that many cities have already changed to this generally one and a half per unit, just to meet the balance between developers and, and city trying to get them off the street, but yet not making them have such a huge parking lot that they can't afford to build.
If we were to pass this, would anybody be in violation? Where do we know?
Um.
In other words, do we grandfather anybody into this?
I believe there is one or two apartments, Jason, if you would click on that, the ones there towards the bottom would not meet the current code. Logan.
But you know, I don't mean this wrong, but like the one that say wagon wheel.
Yeah.
I mean, they're probably having one and a half units for every two.
Yeah.
Is more than enough. I mean, many of those people don't drive.
Because it's a senior. Right. They have one for one, and that's probably enough for them. And so, yeah, I think we would want a grandfather in our, our existing.
Yep. And I will, I, your code does have for senior-specific housing is one per unit. So I, and I'm not sure if wagon wheel is in that designation, even though it generally serves a population that doesn't drive a lot, yeah.
So you're really saying that the ones that have the problem are Logan and Kalu at this point?
They may, they wouldn't meet the code.
They wouldn't meet the code.
Yeah. I don't know if they have a problem.
And they wouldn't meet senior either.
Yeah. But, yeah. Yeah, it's definitely worth, it is, it's some information that I think we can gather, is talk to them and see if they have, you know, when the city owned Logan, I'm not aware of any parking complaints, but we can certainly reach out to the manager there and see if she's received any, any complaints about that. And especially the neighbors, I, the neighbors in that area, you know, maybe at your next public meeting, maybe some of the neighbors of any of these apartments would have concerns over decreasing the amount of parking.
Sure, go ahead, there.
In Section 207240, there's also reference to parent B now that is concerning loading space.
Mm-hmm.
We're doing away with that completely, then?
Um, the loading space is, we, yes, we are doing away, what we found out was that Rebecca and I were interpreting it differently, and that there is not, it's not a common thing that is in, in the code. We can certainly find a, find a decent specification if we wanted, but she believes that there's only been one application for a loading permit area in her time here. So we didn't, most of the time, the loading areas are dictated by the truck turning, and so anything that the city might say of, that your loading area has to be this big by this big, it's going to really be based off of the type of trucks that are entering it. And so it, you know, I don't see it as a problem for the city, but if you have any suggestions, we can look into that as well.
Okay, thank you, Melanie. As counsel, this is the first reading of the amended ordinance, so there will be two other public hearings on this. Thank you for that thorough explanation of what's in there, Melanie, appreciate that. And if we can get that word out to the public, or at least to the, a lot of these property owners, to see if there's any questions that they have going forward. So I entertain a motion to pass the ordinance from the first to the second reading.
I still move.
Moved by Rasmussen. It's your second.
Do we, do we do the public hearing?
I'm sorry? We did not. So at this time, with the ordinance, we'll open a public hearing if there's any comment on the first reading of the ordinance. Seeing no interest, we'll close the public hearing. Second, is there a second on the motion, please?
Second.
Second by Hallie. Any discussion? Not, please call, yes, go ahead.
I do want to say something, because it's sort of, on one hand, we're making our, our ordinance more liberal, but when I saw the list of all our apartments, no one even, is even close to what the ordinance says now.
Yeah.
And so I'm a little bit, and I, and it's, and I, you know, and we haven't, you know, we used, like you said, we, we used to own Logan apartments, and that was, parking was never an issue there. Now, maybe many of the residents don't, don't drive or, or something. But I guess, you know, there's always exceptions to every rule, and there can be variances granted to, to specific complexes that go up, that if they, for some reason, feel it's not required, or their, their residents wouldn't need that many parking places, right? So is that?
I guess the only thing I would say, John, is that probably many of the individuals who reside in Logan
Yeah.
Are not, you know, do not have vehicles.
Don't drive, right.
No. I mean, so I don't, I think that's one of the reasons that I feel that, you know, it's not, does not create a problem for them, that
Right.
I mean, as I say, many of them are not, you know, are owners of vehicles, and parking would not be an issue for them.
Well, in any case, I guess we're liberalizing our, we're making it, parking less, requirements less stringent through this ordinance, so I would support that. But I guess, again, it's a
But in particular, I think it's really geared towards the new developments.
Right.
We're, we are going to grandfather in those properties, and I think it's really just to the new development. So the new developers that are here in our audience tonight, obviously, you've designed your parking to comply with this number of spaces?
Yeah, with the new.
Yes, with the new. So I think that's, that's where we're going to be going forward, is with this more state standardized compliance.
Thank you.
Any other discussion, counsel? Please call the roll, Joy.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Revolinski?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, motion passes. Counsel, just wanted to give a kind of a public report on the city administrator search. As you know, counsel met last Tuesday and did an initial round of interviews via Skype with six candidates. Four were chosen as finalists. The four have been invited to visit Fairfield on October 13th and 14th, where final interviews will be conducted. And if there's a candidate designated satisfactory to the council, then they will be offered a job on that weekend, and we should know something relatively soon about a new city administrator position. We'll move then to committee reports, the Economic Development Committee.
Economic Development Committee did meet, and I think I'm going to defer this to John, I guess, or Josh, because they were going to have a further meeting regarding some of the questions that had arisen.
Okay, thank you.
So, as I say.
We had two matters with the committee. One of the matters that we reviewed with them is still in the process of being finalized, but we have a TIF project that has been out with the council concerning the neighborhood builders project down across from Pilot Grove Bank. We've got an open house Thursday on their first start of this. Our Public Finance Council in Des Moines recommended that we segment that into a Phase One, a Phase Two, and a Phase Three, as far as the way we go about tiffing it. And there was a specific reason for that. It's turned into something where we're doing some renegotiating with the developers, the first part of the project. I believe both the city, as far as the commitment the city made to install sewer, and what the developers said they would do as far as construction of two fourplexes and a duplex are on the course that was intended. The second phase, which is around the corner and up a street that doesn't exist yet, which will be South Court, they have, in the developers' plans, called it Phase Two. In our TIF perspective, from the Aylers, public finance lawyers that are working with us on a development agreement, they feel we're smarter to segment that off from the original discussed development agreement. If you don't, and you have one and two, or one and two and three in it, you end up with a stage as part of your tenure end up with a stage as part of your 10-year TIF finance, or in one way your 14-year, if you, depending on what you call it, where you lose at the front end, possibly one or two of your TIF increment years. And the impact of that, if, let's say they build in the first year for certifying value, they build a duplex and a fourplex and they start on the other, but it's not quite ready to certify. That's going to be fine as far as the improvement that the city's entitled to reimbursement for as far as increment that goes back against the cost of the sewer or infrastructure on that Lincoln Street piece, Phase One. But it isn't going to be that great of an increment as far as around the corner building the new South Court Street and so forth. But in phasing it that way, if you get around the corner and we bring it back to a new council after the first of the year, which will be pretty much this council, but with maybe one change, yes, what we'll have is the Phase Two, starting it then and putting it in a different year will allow us to get the full increment for everything in Phase Two without having that smaller increment attributable to Phase One that we otherwise have rolled over into the second year if we start the whole package, one, two, three. When we talked this over with the developers, the developer said, well, you're taking some of our flexibility away by doing that. The overall understanding by both the city and by the developers that between now and 2020 sometime, there will be about three and a half million dollars worth of development down there. So looking at it as the first half million dollars of development and so forth with Phase One, and you look at it as the overall intent, which is two and three, of getting that much more, but realizing that that much more isn't going to come until years later, our public finance advisor is saying, well, you, you're really going to miss some increment no matter what if you don't stage it. So that's where we are right now. When we talked with the Economic Development Committee about it, they saw no problem with that. The Aylers firm, on the other hand, said if you put it all in one basket right now, you really do restrict yourself to possible losses of one, two, or even three years of your bigger increment, because if the council says right now, we're going to commit to one, two, and three phases, and it's all going to start in this year, we can't turn around and say later in that scenario that, well, we've decided to back off of two and three, and we can't speak to what a council after January 1st will do with this council. So essentially, that's been explained to the developers. The Economic Development Committee felt that we wouldn't be making a big reach by telling the developers, yes, you can anticipate that our disposition towards you will be just as favorable as it was before, but we're going to stage this and you'll have to trust that we are going to look at this again. We've assured them that we're going to start on the Stage Two TIF documentation and so forth right after the election, and that we will have something on the table to look at right after the swearing end of the new council, to do it that way and be in a new year. Now, that's kind of a more information than you probably wanted.
So, John, bottom line, is the developers okay with this? Is this going to mess with their cash?
Well, they were having a meeting over the weekend, and Josh, I don't know if you've got some feedback about that today or not.
I haven't got any feedback on it, but there is some other pieces to the development agreement. One main piece that they have concern over, and we're going to try to put together the Economic Development Committee, the developers themselves, the Aylers firm, and get together all in one meeting via phone and Skype and discuss some of their other concerns. There was some changes to the new development agreement specifically about, rather than committing to three and a half million dollars of new assessment, new development, the Aylers firm had changed that to 300, three and a half million dollars of assessment, but a hundred thousand dollars minimum assessment on each unit. And the developer seems to have an issue with that particular detail. So we're going to try and work that out in a, in a group meeting. We've kind of been having some long distant conversations and we really just need to get everyone together in the room. So that's one other detail we want to try and work through, and we think there's going to be a solution. We just don't know what that is yet.
We're listening carefully to the developers as far as the word flexibility, because they said that sort of this initial build of a duplex and a fourplex will help them understand if there's more of a demand for the one than the other. It may make some things look different in Stage Two. And that, we understand where we want to come from on that. The other side of it is, we explained to the Economic Development Committee that this thing could result in a gap as far as the increment that arises. If you have a year or two that's delayed as far as a bigger increment to go against, it could cost us 50 or 70,000 based on some projections from our Travis Squires financial advisor, looking at the way that, that would work on a payback plan of 10 years or 14 years. So we're trying to do this so that it doesn't put us in a position where we have to figure out, well, how are we going to come up with that? Or put the developers in a position where we have to commit them to paying gas.
Well, that's, that's where I was concerned about their feedback, is it, because it disturbs their cash flow model for the project.
Absolutely. And I think, I think there's a solution in the end. We just need to get all the, the folks with the domain knowledge in their area, both on the legal oversight and the financial oversight, on the TIF projections and the performances. And I think we'll come to a solution. It'll just take a couple of meetings outside council here.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you both.
Anything else, Martha?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
I needed the two of them.
Yeah, absolutely. A lot of detail there. Then we'll move to our department reports and from the chief of police. It's nearly October. Do you have something to announce tonight?
I can't take a lot of credit for it. Pending city clerk was good enough to send me an email to remind me that Halloween is coming up. And so, a big thanks to Rebecca, plus then she had to remind me what the times were last year. Being that my kids are a little bit older now, I wanted to make it five hours and she thought that was a little long to be on trick or treat this year, so she had me shorten it down. So we came up with, 31st is not on a weekend night, so it's probably going to be a good night. 31st from 5:30 to 8:00 PM is what our request is.
Okay.
Still move?
Move by Revolinsky to approve Halloween Trick or Treat Night. Is there a second by Florinoy? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Odds on whether it'll be raining that night?
Guaranteed.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Counsel, this next item comes to us from the Park and Rec Department. We don't have someone from Park and Rec to explain the, the request, but as you recall, in the presentation and recommendations from the Iowa Architects Foundation for a number of the things that we can do on the square to enhance the shopping experience, and also the connectedness of all sides of the square, that there was a recommendation to trim some of the evergreen trees up to a height where from a sightline, you can see all sides of the square. So that you're not, you're not blocked, you're, you can see the retail on the other side, the store names, you can see people shopping and dining in different places, things like that. So it was a recommendation that I think the, the, the committee that was working with them at the time felt very positive about. That was taken. We have three council representatives here who are members of that committee, so please speak up if you'd like. But that was brought to the Park and Rec Advisory Board. They were given the presentation. They've given their blessing and permission to go ahead and do that trimming. I have received some emails from some concerned citizens about the trimming of the trees, from, anything from health of the tree to the nostalgic history of young whippersnappers, no, young children being able to climb those trees at city events, which was the very first thing that went my, through my mind when it was recommended as well. So I understand the concern. So.
Those pine trees are not climbable. You can't climb those, those evergreens.
Some of the spruce, the spruce trees, oh yes, they.
Kids did it when kids were in there.
Really?
Kids' Day, they were full of.
Kids' Day, they're full of trees. But anyway, so we are going to ask for the council's approval or not on that tonight, but I, I do know that there's at least one person in the audience that wanted to speak to that, so I'd invite them to speak if they'd like about the concept.
Thanks.
Introduce yourself and your address.
I'm Joe Moschak. So I recently sort of found out, I was serendipitously, my points, like you say, first point is, my kids actually did climb those trees. It's not impossible. Especially my youngest son, he's 30 now, so they don't do it anymore, but I don't think the tree's gone that much bigger. So I appreciate that. I actually really, I was actually amazed that this town actually allowed that, or let me put it this way, didn't forbid it directly, anyway. It's one of the charms of Fairfield I like, you know, along with the penny parking mirrors it used to be here. It was kind of quaint. I, I think that pine trees, you know, I'd actually emailed a couple of people. I'll speak on behalf of at least one of them. Emily Fotis had mentioned that there's a similar spruce tree that was trimmed outside the Mcgilleney house. It used to be like pine trees all the way down to the ground, and she didn't like the way it looks. I haven't even actually gone over there to look at it, but I've seen other places where they trim the pine trees. Aesthetically, I don't think they look very good, so that's my main one, one thing. I don't think too many people know about this. I'd say, nobody I've talked to, except I think Ron Blair, he knew about it, and, you know, some of the people on the council knew about it, but nobody else knew about it. And I apologize in advance, I apologize to Ed that I did not go to any of these meetings. I, it just didn't click as to what was going on. I thought, oh, bike lanes, that sounds good. Signage sounds great. And so I didn't bother to go to the meeting, I should have. But I think it's possible there's other people there that would care about this. Not, not too many showed up tonight, but they, I think they would care about. I'd like, if you were to approve this, I, I would request that you set a date and maybe even say that in the paper. I do read the paper. I think somebody suggested I read the paper. I, I do try to read the paper, but sometimes details like this just aren't fleshed out. With regard to the health of the trees, I did hear back from one arborist, Bob Casella, and he, and Emily also pointed out a couple links. And, you know, I don't know that's a, a big reason, because I think Michael had said that he referenced that it's healthy for the trees to get trimmed, trimmed down, because they spend a lot of time going up to get nutrients at those far branches. And this guy, some of these links said, no, that's not the case. They rely on it for support. Again, I don't know that's such an overwhelming consideration, but at least I think it's more or less neutral. I mean, we planted the trees. We can do what we want to with them, and, and they're not going to die if we trim the tree, trim the branches. But that being said, I at least wanted to counteract the, I think it's a neutral. I guess that's all I have to say. I just, I would like, I, I think it'd be good if, you know, you set a date, let's say after the first of the year, publicize that, and then maybe have, you know, I, I would write a letter to the editor. I actually would think it'd be really cool if we could have some papers maybe put in the paper, have like the facts up top in the pro and a con column, and, you know, with guest editors. I'd like to do that. I don't know who would write, I'm sure I could find someone to write the pro side. I'd be happy to put together the con side and then see what people think. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you, Joe. Well, I think my, my comment, oh, yes, I'm sorry, go ahead. Could you introduce yourself, please?
My name is Vesna Glavina. I haven't nearly the courage to speak extemporaneously. I think I'll collapse in terror if I do. But I have a couple of notes prepared. I say this all with complete diffidence, even though my words are by my own nature, always very impassioned, so please don't misunderstand my passion for disrespect. But I think that the idea of trimming those trees is rather dreadful. And so I believe hacking the skirts off of the fern spruce trees in our square is a dreadful idea. We are lucky to have mature trees in our beautiful and gracious town square. Why would we want to turn it into some kind of crazy Dr. Seuss style landscape? It is not the evergreens that are hurting our local businesses. It's the economy and poverty and Walmarts. If anything, our beautiful green square mitigates the sense of economic dis-ease, of unstoppable blight, of returning the awareness correctly back to the abundance of the natural world and the traditional values of small town America. Our beautiful green square buys us hope and a sense that some things cannot be bought, cannot be taken away from us. It preserves the ineffable and holds at bay the crass, the calculating, and the plain wacky. What Fairfield is trying to project is friendliness and a sense of well-being. We want to be a town that supports timeless values, a livable town. What we're not trying to project is a world where everything is always for sale, everything is always expendable, everything always trends to the lowest common denominator. It's one thing to experiment with new ideas, but we shouldn't be doing so at the expense of our beautiful trees, of our beautiful and gracious green spaces, of the proven and true. There's value to living in balance with nature rather than always attempting to impose arbitrary and capricious notions on the natural world. Isn't it bad enough that we're losing our ash trees? Isn't it bad enough that the utility companies hack away at our trees like barbarians rather than pruning them with respect as they once did? Let us at least appear to be treating our trees with respect for their natural and functional beauty and their service. Why do we want to remove the structural support which the lower branches provide to the branches above in time of heavy snowfall? It sounds a lot like the now discredited demonization of butter and eggs, dietary recommendations which were later found to be misguided. But while we can adjust our diets to keep up with the wildly changing dietary advice of the professionals, stripping our lovely fir trees of their beauty is irreversible. As the big ant said in the Lord of the Rings, let's not be hasty. Turning our beautiful park into a grotesquerie of mangled trees is not the path to prosperity. Nobody will visit our struggling businesses because they can now squint across the long square, past the stripped trunks of once magnificent trees, and discover sore store signs with excitement and an unexpected urgency to spend some money. I'm not comparing our square to the great parks of our world, but those latter are great not because they lay it all out, but because they deliver their delights and their vistas by bits. Past one green turn in the path, one green and obscuring wall of greenery at a time. They tease and entice. They invite you in, they invite you to stay and tarry. We cannot compete with Walmart on it, on their terms. If our businesses are to survive, they must do so on their own terms, on their own terrain. In order to be appealing, they must first of all be situated in an appealing space. Today's high-end retail spaces go to great lengths to evoke the graciousness and delights of another era. They do not attempt to draw business to themselves by exposing themselves embarrassingly. They create alluring spaces for themselves as a prerequisite for success, because people will tolerate ugliness for the sake of Walmart prices, but they expect better from everyone else. Unlike developers of contrived retail spaces, Fairfield is lucky to have the real thing. It is difficult to treasure what you have, especially when those we love are failing to thrive economically. to thrive economically. But this is no time to give up our treasure. I'm sure the idea is born of love and concern for our local businesses, and I'm sure it is your best intentions that have given it nearly unstoppable momentum. But it is not too late to reconsider. It is not too late to find a different path for your love and good intentions. I, for one, will avoid the square if you decide to butcher its trees, because it will simply be too depressing to visit. And I'm not alone. I'm just sort of more verbose than most, and I apologize for that. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Your eloquence is very impressive and very passionate, but I do assure you that there are best of intentions at work in this decision as well. And any other, any comments from the committee members?
Yeah, I did talk to Bob, the arborist, today. He called me, and we had a discussion. And he started the phone call by saying, "I know you're a lover of trees," because it's true, I'm always involved in tree planting projects. I'm not a fan of cutting trees for no reason. The conversation went to that urban trees have to tolerate urban settings, and we've trimmed all the trees around the nodes in order to make sightlines for traffic. So, making sightlines in an urban setting does happen. Two-thirds of all pine trees are trimmed up, it's a statistic. It does take away the ability of the bottom branches to support the others in times of snow. That's true. If it's cut properly, then it doesn't allow for any disease to affect the tree. So, yeah, they have those lower branches for a reason. Some of them die off naturally, but we are changing them. But we planted them, as Joe pointed out, and we put them in a location that maybe wasn't exactly the right location. Putting pine trees on a Central Park downtown business district does keep you from being able to see what's around, and that's not really what we want down there. So, to me, this is in place of ultimately just removing them altogether. Trim them up, no more than one-third of the tree. There's discretion. Pam Craft, the park superintendent, has discretion, so she's not going to trim one, like, half the branches or anything like that. We're talking about six trees. Some are already quite dying back on the lower levels. There are two I know I could speak of that almost half the lower branch is already gone naturally. So, yeah, you have to acknowledge, we are doing this to these trees, but there are trees to do it to, and they're not what you call specimen trees, they're not 100-year-old hardwoods, they're not even native to Iowa, these trees. But we could do it in a way that's respectful, so the trees continue to grow and people can enjoy them, but also enhance the downtown. I used to be a downtown business owner. Any help you can get downtown is worth it. So, that's my two cents.
Any other comments?
Are any of the trees unhealthy?
Yep. The argument's made that the lower limbs cause the trees to become less healthy. I just was wondering if any of them are unhealthy, or have been deemed unhealthy.
Don't have an answer for that.
Pam Craft would say one in particulars. It's kind of leaning to one side, losing some limbs. So, that would be one that she might not want to cut too much.
Any dead limbs, do they present a hazard or safety concern? I think those should be removed if they're hazardous.
For anyone who climbs on them, maybe.
Besides that, I like the appearance of the trees that would look, I don't think they would look very aesthetically appealing if they were trimmed a third of the way up, all the way around.
I'll put my comments in. I'm not going to have that many more meetings to do that. I thought, I'm not on the committee, but I thought this was a great idea. And not because it's going to give vision to the stores on the other side of the square necessarily, which it would enhance that, I think, a little bit, but I just think it'll make the square a more open feeling to go in, because I do feel those trees sort of separate things out a lot. And we just lighten it up there. I think, you know, we use it for so many different events, and it would just sort of make it all one usable space. So, despite your very beautifully worded argument against, this was my argument for.
Thank you. And again, I just also wanted to make the point, Joe, that calling for a public hearing on this and rescheduling it forward, you know, essentially, we are representative government. And, you know, the idea has been presented to the representatives of the city several times in public hearings and in public settings, and really not something that we, you know, we need to revisit again. You know, I'm not surprised that there are people who are going to be a little divided about the aesthetics of this. I think we kind of anticipated that, and that did come up in the discussion initially. But we are very good about trees and replacing trees within the city, doing everything that we can. You know, we're very unique in that we have 160-tree urban orchard in one of our largest parks. We're going to continue to do everything we can to support, nurture, and develop that within the city. But I think what Councilman Hallie described is, and what John described also, are both very accurate in terms of what it means to that space and what it will add to the downtown. It's an experiment, so we'll see, you know, where it goes from here, but we've spent two years studying how to enhance the downtown. We've made many improvements. We still have some that we're very, very excited about, and we think this is going to add something. So, it's in that spirit that we're moving forward with this. So, counsel, I entertain a motion to support the recommendation, the unanimous recommendation of the Park and Rec Advisory Board and the committee also looking at the wayfinding in the downtown to approve the tree trimming.
So moved.
Moved by Hallie.
Second.
Second by Rasmussen. And please call the roll.
Hallie?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Flornoy?
No.
Hamilton?
I've thought a lot about this, and I don't really think that it's going to accomplish what the wayfinding report had to say, so I'm going to say no.
Rev. Linsky?
Yes.
Okay. Motion passes four to two. Thank you, counsel. Appreciate it. Melanie, do you have a project update to finish us off for the evening?
Yes, I'll try and keep it short, but it's been two months since the last update. And so, there are a couple of things I want to point out. On my update, there is a little description about what's going on at the wastewater treatment plant. Both contractors, wastewater treatment plant and the equalization contractor are out there getting set up. I would guess from this point on, on the council meeting, you'll often see either Carly Nelson or PKG on the $75,000 or more, but they will be progressing here. We're hoping that the equalization basin is actually done, the earthwork is done yet this year. So, the rain on Halloween will be appreciated for this project. But that does bring me to the next thing that I wanted to make the council aware of is the condition of Walton Lake. The city drew the lake down for the safety of the crews as they were working on deconstruction of the existing spillway. The city has not removed any water from that lake since July. So, just the evaporation, the use from irrigation are all things that have contributed to that lake continuing to drop, since we have not had significant rain since, well, other than the five inches the other day, it had really been since before the lake was drawn down that we had any significant rain. We are not at a panic situation or anything yet, but if we do continue to see this drought through the fall, there will be concern about the overall fish population of Walton going into the winter. Like I said, I don't, fingers crossed, we get rain on not Halloween, any other days, and that this doesn't become an issue. But I did want to get it out there for you. That is something we're watching and we are concerned with. Like I said, the city, hopefully by the end of next week, the city will be to a point where they would not need to remove any water, that they're getting the work done up close to the dam itself. So, they are going to be getting to a point where it's safe for the water level to increase, but we need rain for the water to increase. So, making you aware of that issue that we are watching here. Then on the second page, Adams Avenue Sewer and Reconstruction. We did discuss earlier that there would be some time between the sewer work and the street work. Even though you have awarded the street project, we're looking at some utilities needing to get moved. Well, again, we'll keep an eye on this project, and hopefully we have a lot of fall left to be able to keep working on this project, and we'll keep you and the public up to date as those utilities get moved. But you'll start to see some construction out there that is not street construction, it's rather some utilities that are relocating. And then finally, this is something that we've talked a lot about, the city crews doing more and more in-house. I just listed here that the city street crews have finished Chautauqua Park entrance, paving that, and also this summer, they did some alleys in this downtown area, resulting in around 2,000 square yards of concrete. That is a lot. The crews have really been doing a lot, and I have asked Daryl that in the future, maybe towards the end of the summer, to talk a little bit about what that is in terms of dollars that the city crews are saving. But it's, I know the park took them a long time, and I think everyone appreciates the park, but then there's also the financial side to it, too, and we really appreciate that. That, my very, very last point is to give everyone a heads-up, that Highway 1 will be closed one day sometime in the future, soon as we get done with the, done with all the permits, and we'll have proper notification and signage and all of that. Mike mentioned it before we left, that the street crews were doing the patching for all of the water main breaks. They're finally getting to that. That includes a break that was out here on Highway 1 in Burlington. So, when it's an emergency repair for a water, DOT does not require us to shut it down and proper signage, but now, when we go back in, we will be requiring those permits. So, in addition to working very, very hard on the alleys, and Chautauqua Park, street crews will be working on Highway 1 in the upcoming weeks as well. So, we appreciate the work that they've been doing, and all the departments, but tonight I highlighted the streets.
Thank you, Melanie. Appreciate it. Counsel, any other business this evening? I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Moved to adjourn.
Moved by Hamilton.
Second.
Second by Rev. Linsky. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Meeting adjourned.